Okay, in compliance with chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice has been given to all members of the governing body, the local source and the Westfield leader. The two newspapers designated to receive such notice, the notice is also posted on the Borough Hall Bulletin Board, as well as on our website. Okay, let's start with a salute to the flag, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let the record be flat that all members of council are on. Glenn Mortimer, our administrator, Matt Deanna, our director of Public Works is on. John Post is on, our attorney Jill Good, our CFO, Frank Musella, our director of recreation, and Joe Gianuzzi, the chief of police are all on. Did I miss anybody?
Martha Lopez.
Oh, hi Martha.
Hi Martha.
And Martha Lopez, our town clerk, okay? The first item tonight is the contribution to Governor Livingston High School Project graduation. This is an annual donation. Excuse me?
Sorry, nothing.
This is an annual contribution that we give each year to Governor Livingston High School Project Graduation. Project Graduation is an alcohol and drug free celebration for the seniors after graduation. It's something that's gone on for a number of years. Both of my sons participated in it, and I'm sure Bob, your kids also did. So it's something that we give every year. So does anyone have any questions about that? Not sure how they're going to do it this year. I guess, you know, we'll find out how they're going to actually do it as we get closer to graduation.
And how much is that for?
We, uh, we give every year. Okay, then we have the temporary capital budget. Like I said, we're going to table that to go into exact because it involves the awarding of some contracts. Next is the 2020 budget transfers. That should be in your package. We're basically transferring out of legal, police, court, and public works. And it's all going into the capital improvement fund. And we'll discuss that further when we get into exact about the temporary capital budget, what we plan on doing with that. Okay, so next we have the tax overpayment refunds. I guess Jill, you can tell us about that. I don't think we got anything on that.
No, no, we're still collecting taxes. End of the grace period is February 10th. So I will email everybody the overpayments at the end of the grace period.
Okay, okay, so next we have the Local Government Week. I guess Deanna, you're going to talk to us about the Local Government Week.
Yeah, Local Government Week is scheduled this year for April 18th through the 24th. I sent everybody a list of ideas that we're looking to do. Right now, they're all going to be virtual until we can do things differently. But we're looking to do something with every department. And I haven't received a negative response from the departments, so I think we'll move forward with them. Would you like me to talk about each department?
You want to just give us a brief overview, Deanna, okay?
Like the Restoration Committee, virtual tour of the Levi Quarry House and the Hatfields House with a history and lesson of each one. The Fire Department, member instruction tour of the truck and explanation of each. The Police Department, virtual introduction of entire police department, getting to know our police officers. The Rescue Squad, virtual introductions of squad, tour of the ambulances, and our new one, of course, the sheriff. Council, maybe we'll have a day for the council members to open it up to the community for the kids or the family members to enjoy our company and get to know us a little bit better. Administrator, the virtual introductions, each department and employee to include court administrator, clerks, and judges. Bingo Nights, the library, we're looking into an interview with local authors or how to become, do like free workshops, how to become an entrepreneur, how to become an author, or maybe do a career fair. And then, of course, Scott, the schools, to get the schools involved, we would like maybe each eighth grader to write a essay on what it means to be a mayor and then maybe serve the evening with you, mayor, for one evening, as well as the town clerk to prepare a resolution for whatever it is that we're doing that evening.
That's great, Deanna.
Yeah, it should be good. Okay, anybody have any questions, Deanna, about any of the programs? Anybody want to make any additional comments or anything else that they think we might want to do for Local Government Week?
Yes, I'm going to make one comment. Thank you, mayor. We're going to also pass a resolution. We do have a sample, and I think we'll have it ready for March to go ahead and pass. But just, we're going to go ahead and celebrate Local Government Week with all of these different virtual programs.
Okay, great. Okay, so next we have, item six is the OEM Coordinator Compensation. I'm assuming that A and E met and discussed that. Bob, you want to report to us what your findings and what your recommendation is?
Yes, mayor, the OEM Director Compensation is a three-year position appointed by the mayor. The current person in the position is in the second year of the position. The position will pay a $9,500 a year annual salary, no vehicle, no other benefits. So I think it was accepted by the committee to move forward with that salary of $9,500 a year.
Do we have to do anything with our salary range ordinance to make sure that it fits with that? Martha, I see you shaking your head.
No, it's in the range that's on there.
In the range.
All right, very good. Anybody else have any questions or comments about that?
And then, the next thing, mayor, was we're going to advertise for a zoning officer property maintenance position with six hours per week. So Glenn's got the ad running and will, are ready to be run. So we're advertising for that position as a part-time position.
Okay, great.
And I think, is there anything else? I think Glenn, I think that was only two things that we... Oh, no, the other, the last thing.
The next two you have as well.
The last two is the...
Volunteer Day.
Well, the intern position. So we talked about an intern position to be opened up for the different departments. So we're going to talk to department heads, see what they would need and see what they... What kind of positions, what kind of projects could be accomplished by having interns, especially even this year with COVID, there's not a lot of internship jobs. So it could help out some, hopefully, local residents. And so we're going to work on that and get some ideas across. Really, we're looking at the department heads to come up with some kind of projects that could help them get them some things done that maybe they don't have time to get done, or some, you know, just really things that are interesting, that not just filing and stuff like that. So I think it'll be a good, a good program.
These are college days?
Yes.
College, okay.
Yeah, I think college. And then the Volunteer Day, I guess, we're going to talk about Volunteer Day, see if we're going to do that again. So I don't know, we need to talk about an exec, or is that something we can talk about right now? But Renee had brought up that Volunteer Day happened a few years and they had the day at the pool, and it was kind of a nice thing, or something, something nice that we do for the people that do volunteer in the different boards and committees and stuff like that. So looking at some different, maybe just some different options for that.
I think it was more of a volunteer celebration day, would you say, Bob?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Maybe do something, so some ideas, I will throw some ideas out that would be good to make the people feel appreciated for what they do.
Okay, that sounds great.
That was it, Glenn. That's it.
The next is the review of the proposed police rules and regulations. As you know, sort of at the last minute, at the last meeting, we did introduce something on first reading about doing an ordinance so that we can start to, we can publish these rules and regulations. I know John Post had sent out all of the rules and regulations. That was basically, those rules and regulations were a process that started with Joe Santiago. And then the police committee reviewed them. And then they were also reviewed by John Post's office, as well as RTBolt's office. And I think John, Christina Malphi may have also reviewed them. Is that correct, John?
Some of them, yes.
Okay, so, and then as a result of that, there were some minor modifications that we had to make to make sure that the rules and regulations were in accordance with some statutes that had recently come into play. And those amendments were made based upon a discussion between the police committee, RTBolt, John Post, and Chief Gianuzzi. Those rules and regulations were submitted to Len Shiro, who was the PBA attorney for their comment. I don't, I think there may have been one or two comments from them, which we seem to have addressed. I know there were some last-minute changes about tattoos, I think was one of them. And I think maybe facial hair, but we seem to have resolved those issues so that our rules and regulations are in accordance with the most recent laws that affect those regulations. So at this point, we're ready to pass on second reading the rules and regulations. Now, does anyone have any questions or comments about any of the rules or regulations?
I have one question. John, I'm just wondering if you're going to go over all of this with the various people that need to read all this, the police officers, administration, and do they, do they sign something that they have read all this?
Yes, what will happen is that Joe will promulgate the rules and regulations as a general order. There will also be a requirement that the individual officers read the rules and regulations. Joe, what's the program that you use and then to ensure that they have read them?
The rules and regulations will be loaded into Power DMS, and that will give us a electronic record of when they read it, sign for it, state that they've understood it, and understand what they've read and accept the documents.
So Rachel, to answer your question, one, there is a requirement that the officers read the rules and regulations. And two, there is in place a mechanism to ensure that they do so and to monitor that performance.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay, so the last one is the Proposed Stormwater Control Ordinance. As you recall, last public meeting, John Post had asked that we table that because he wasn't happy with the, the, some of the ordinances. And I'm assuming at this point, John, you've now reviewed those?
Yes, the problem is that, as you all know, we have a borough code. And the borough code that was, that is in effect, reflects the pronouncements made by the DEP regarding stormwater regulation and control that at this point are perhaps eight, seven or eight years old. And so the DEP has come out with a new set of regulations, some of which they want implemented at the municipal level. And they also put out a sample ordinance to implement what they are requiring. It's not just wanting us, they're requiring us to do it. The problem was the interplay between our existing borough code, which is online and accessible to everybody, and this new set of regulations and the sample ordinance that the DEP had put out. So it took some time for us to go through the existing borough code, find out what needed to be deleted and replaced by the new material from the DEP. And we have done that now, so the ordinance that we are proposing for introduction on first reading would accomplish that goal.
So we're ready to start to pass the ordinance for the...
Yes, first reading, first reading would be on the 16th.
Okay.
And if any of you bothered to read the entire ordinance, I commend you. There is an awful lot of material in that ordinance, which is of interest only to engineers, developers, and people who are doing commercial real estate projects.
So John, that's going to be on first reading, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so any other questions about the stormwater control ordinances?
Uh-uh, no.
Okay, so at this point, we are, we have some bills and claims. Renee, you want to take that, please?
Sure, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Mountainside that the following bills of the person's name and for the amount stated below have been duly audited and found to be correct the second day of February 2021. The same be paid after council's review if and when funds are available, and that the mayor, council president, administrator, and treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to sign, deliver warrants for the same, and that is in the amount of 500, not 500, $452,860.66.
Okay, so we got a motion. Do we have a second to pay the bills?
Second.
Okay, Martha, Paul, the council, please.
Councilwoman Andre?
Yes.
Councilman Dirkis?
Yes.
Councilman Matajack?
Yes.
Councilman Messler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peter?
Yes.
Okay, so just a couple reminders. Renee, you're going to have the invocation. The regular meeting is on February 16th, 2021. We do have three ordinances which will be up for second reading. The first one is the ordinance to appropriate the sum of $400,000 for the resurfacing of Bill Lane and Rutgers Road. It's my understanding that we have a DOT grant for that also. Is that correct, Joe?
That's the DOT amount.
Okay, that's a DOT amount, okay. Any questions on that one?
No.
No.
Okay, so next we have the ordinance amending the ordinances to set the pool membership fees for use of the Mountainside Community Pool. I think we talked about them already last month at the work session. So if anyone has any questions, now would be the time to ask them. And if not, we can move on to the next one, which is the ordinance which we're going to change the solar panel ordinance so that people do not have to... Not all people that are going to put solar panels have to go before the Board of Adjustment. We're trying to streamline the process. It's basically going to be subject to Mike Disco's review. And if he sees any issues, he will then refer them to the Board of Adjustment. Glenn, I did notice I got at least three of those sheets where Mike does his zoning review, and there were three solar panel, which his recommendation was that they have to go to the Board of Adjustment. I'd like to contact those residents and advise them that we are going to be changing our ordinance and that they should probably hold off filing an application because there is a fairly substantial cost to do that. And it might behave them to, they might have to refile the application with Mike after we pass the ordinance. I don't know what the mechanism is. You can check with Mike Disco. But it doesn't seem to make any sense to refer him to the Board of Adjustment if we're going to, if we're changing the ordinance, okay?
Okay, sure thing. I'll track him down tomorrow.
Okay, so and then the, does anyone have any questions on that ordinance? We're going to be introducing on the second reading, okay? So the last one is the one we just talked about, about the ordinance regarding the public safety of the police department with their rules and regulations. So if anyone has any other questions about that, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. I guess we're going to add the other ordinance for stormwater control, and that will be on first reading. Okay, so at this point, does anyone have any council comments?
Yes, I do. Paul, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, I want to commend the Fire Department this week. They responded to a fire on Cedar Avenue. Engine two was first to arrive. 14 of our volunteer firemen were involved. Well, they got the fire under control very quickly. It took about 45 minutes. It was a pretty serious fire. And I was there later in the day. It looked like they did a pretty fantastic job, very, something to be very proud of here in Mountainside.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was there at some point when they were sort of wrapping up, and they did do a good job. You can be very proud of our volunteer fire department. Also, you know, we had a number of neighboring towns that also came to assist. It's just a testament to the mutual aid agreements that we have with these other towns. They support us, we support them. I actually think there was, when the fire was going on, there were two towns that were manning the Fire Department at their headquarters. So the mutual aid system seemed to work very well for that fire. So our rescue squad was also there. I understand they did have one firefighter that they assisted. But again, kudos to our volunteer fire department and our volunteer rescue squad. Anyone else have any comments?
Well, we had a request from the PTO asking for the eighth grade pool party to be scheduled for June 18th.
They want us to waive the fee, I would imagine, is that what?
No, it's a different date, mayor, and the...
Waive the fee?
The Recreation Committee met today, and we agreed on that date because it's a different date than usual. And it's a Friday, but we all, we thought that 12 to 5 would be more appropriate for the cleanup and for our members to be aware that we will be closed that day.
Okay. Any other council comments?
I have two things real quick, mayor. One thing is I just wanted to commend the DPW and our contractor for cleaning up during this pretty bad storm. The roads are in great shape. I know they worked long hours and tried to keep up and kept up. And I just wanted to thank and commend Matt Deanna and our Public Works employees and our outside contractor for the great job they did. Matt, stay awake while I'm talking right now so I can commend you. It looks like you have to have much sleep lately. But I just want to appreciate the job you all did, and I'm sure the residents appreciate it also. So that's, that's the first thing. And then, second thing, I just want to, I saw the council president, Deanna, Andre, and a couple other council members celebrated a birthday party for a 105-year-old resident.
Seven.
A 107-year-old restaurant resident, and it was a very nice gesture that you all, everybody put on to have a nice party for somebody at 107 years old. So just, that was very nice of you to all put that together, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Paul?
Yeah.
We should also commend the Mountainside Police Department on that fire too, you know. Chief Gianuzzi and Jackson did a great job there also. I think, if I understood and remember correctly, I think they saved a couple of the pets or something like that.
Two dogs, I think.
Yeah, two dogs, something, something like that, if I remember correctly.
Okay, just a couple of other things. I know we did receive an email from Lisa Fernicola thanking us for the resolution that we passed for her father, Chuck Fernicola. I think it was addressed to Glenn. It says, "Hi Glenn, I did receive the resolution you sent from the borough of Mountainside. I just wanted to thank you and everyone involved. It was so nice. It makes me feel so good that I had such a great dad and that he touched so many people's lives during his life. He will be missed by many, and thank you again, Lisa." So Lisa, of course, kudos to your father. Just a couple other things. I did ride around with Matt today around four o'clock, and they did do an excellent job on the roads. If there are any issues, you can contact the Public Works Department. I know Matt is going through any issues that he received from residents, and I'm sure that they will, they'll, they'll be resolved. Also, I put out a statement this afternoon about the COVID-19 positive cases. I guess there was some confusion about the way that the statement read. I gave a breakdown of the ages. Those, that breakdown was for the entire month of January. It just wasn't for the month of January, so that's why the numbers may have been confusing to some residents. Also, as I explained before, you know, the, the tracking of these positive cases is not an exact science. Some, once the Board of Health does their investigation, they may find that someone who was reported as a Mountainside resident wasn't in fact a resident. They may have used to be a resident, or maybe they worked here in Mountainside. So the, the numbers sometimes don't add up 100%, and that's because some cases come off, and then some cases may even be added on. So I hope that clears up any confusion with the report that I did put out this afternoon. I think that's all that I have for right now. I see we have somebody with their hand up. It sounds like we might have a question. Matt or... Does somebody want to let this person in, or how do we do that? So now it's open for audience participation.
Hey, if we're, if we're open for audience participation, we're on a 13-second delay, however. If you have a question or comment in your, the last four digits of your number, 4954, please press star six to unmute yourself.
So I'm not sure if this is the right forum, but is recycling still coming tomorrow?
Oh, yes, recycling is, well, I spoke to Matt Deanna about this this afternoon. Could you just please give us your name and your address, please?
Do I have to? I live in Mountainside. I'm a new resident. I just don't know how it works with, no.
Sure.
Okay, now there will be recycling pickup tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, any other comments, questions? You see anybody chiming in, Matt?
No, there are no, no further questions or comments.
Okay, so we are going to go into exact. Hopefully it'll be short. And Martha, I don't know what I did with my little statement, so if you could read the executive session notice, I would appreciate it, please.
All right, bear with me because it's not the usual one. I'm going to wing this one. Okay, so whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved. now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Mountainside as follows. The public shall be excluded from the following discussion. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is contract negotiations.
Okay, so we need a motion to what? Exactly.
Second.
You got a second? Okay, so we'll see you in exact in a few minutes, okay?
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.